I'm getting pressured from that side.
All right, section, who is going?
Yep.
James Hartman.
Here.
Tom Turp.
Yep.
I'll see if I can.
Yes.
Can you see the picture of you?
Here.
I say a crow.
Here. All right, I have proof of posting my journey for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second? Thank you. Any corrections, changes? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do we have motion to approve the meeting minutes from November ninth? Do we have a second?
Sorry?
Any corrections? Hearing none, James, yes. Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah? Yes. And I'll vote yes as well. Uh, I got nothing to report, Mark.
Uh, tomorrow we've got, uh, next generation science standards training in the morning for elementary staff, representatives on staff, and then secondary is in the afternoon. What, this is the first of three trainings that we'll be doing in the next four months. Uh, also we're doing adaptive schools training on Thursday and Friday, that's a combination of team and teacher leaders going and, uh, just a way to learn how to facilitate meetings and, you know, takeaways and bring it back to our. Uh, something I learned a couple of weeks ago when I attended a, uh, I was, I had, um, and as you know, I've been on the Village of Mazel Manes, uh, steering committee for economic development, and we had this meeting with, the DNR as well as Dane County, and Dane County had informed us that Norton Forest, which is just at the end of Reeve, basically Reeve and Fesselt looking west. An individual has, uh, basically donated or has a, put an easement into the land to come to the county park, and they have a lawn cabin, and so they're wondering if the school would like to use that for school gardens or things like that, environmental, uh, for a picture, a map, pretty neat, it's already got some walking trails. So, some, some cool stuff. Hand it out to you, soup for kids, the foundation, and I, I have a few more for people in the audience. Uh, foundation's doing a soup for kids on January thirty-first. Don't worry, if you think your favorite team will be in the Super Bowl, it is the weekend before, so you, you know, you won't miss any of the pregame festivities. Uh, we have base camp, what this will be is, um, the money raised will be given or raised and then, uh, distributed for teacher mini grants, and so, um, it should be a good time. Well, if this is in our, uh, new December newsletter, we'll also get information out, we'll do pre-sale tickets in January, so come with your fifteen dollar bills to the first board meeting in January. Uh, employee survey, last year we did the WASB employee survey, employees got an email today, it will be open from the thirtieth to December seventh. I'm going to report out to the board in June. Thanks.
Okay. Public employee. Uh, all right, district personnel, our district business personnel. Do we have motion to hire Seth Bausman as assistant high school track and field coach for the fifteen sixteen season with an appointment of twenty-two, twenty-one hundred dollars? Over. Okay. Thank you, discussion? Hearing none, James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Do we have motion to hire Susan Martins as a three-hour cook at the middle high school with a starting hourly rate of thirteen seventy-four? Over. Second. Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Policy, discuss possible recommendation on civic assessment requirements for graduation.
So mandated by state statute, the, the class of twenty-seven and after, twenty seventeen and after, will need to pass a civic assessment. Notice, assessment, not a test, doesn't have to be a high stakes test. Could be a group project, take home project, project to do with mom and dad. We have yet to determine that, but what this does by making this adjustment, the policy, um, makes us compliant with the new law. Uh, just note that students with, uh, IEP, Individualized Educational Plan, have to take it, but, uh, passing it is not a criteria. You have to score sixty or better on the test.
All right, I have a motion to make that adjustment to the policy three forty-five point six. Over. Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. All right, discuss possible recommendation on five thirty-three rule of employee recruitment and hiring procedures.
So the one change is on D three, it was requested by the board, um, just basically in high profile hires, the board reserves the right to participate in the hiring process. First option would be hit to have a board member representative on the hiring committee. For administrative hires, the Board of Education may have separate, a separate interview with the recommended candidates.
Do we have motion to add that to five thirty-three rule? Over. Thank you, do we have a second? Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Discuss possible action, discuss possible recommendation on catastrophic leave.
So, uh, let, we started this process probably in March of last year, we've gotten some feedback. Stems from just a question of who does the catastrophic leave bank apply to? Uh, the goal is not to debate the merits, but rather to be as clear as possible. So, in prior language, some people could have interpreted to mean that you had to qualify for FMLA. Not all employees qualify for FMLA because employees that are with the district in their first year don't qualify, as well as you need a certain number of hours every year to qualify for FMLA. So, the intent was to make this a inclusive document and make it more clear. The other challenge was, um, is how to account for new child leave or catastrophic leave, and so, got together, it's our recommendation that we move to tier two as opposed to tier one. So, tier one donations are when someone that is qualified, um, the HR's administrative assistant, Penny would send out a note, you know, basically there's this process to determine it, but once it's determined that a need exists, then a note sent out and people can donate. After a year, those go into tier two or the, the big bucket. With new child leave and catastrophic leave, those are five day maxes as is, so, um, from a management standpoint, you know, we're, we don't want to be saying, hey, yep, this person has enough, you don't have to contribute. You know, that's not our decision to make, and also sometimes if people donate, and they're like, well, I gave it to that person, but it didn't get used, just trying to be more straightforward in, in terms of how that would be used. So, tier two contributions are funded every year at the end of the year, so there, there's an opportunity to not, to donate every year. Um, and that has a pot of anything that carry, any tier ones after a year go in there, and then also the initial dollar amount. When it was established, the district put in an eighteen thousand dollar credit. Right now, tier two contributions are equivalent to about seventy-five hundred dollars, so that's what's in the pot. If there's nothing in the pot, then there's, there's no relief or anything. So, these are predicated, this, the, you know, the intent remains the same, to help people through a tough time, and, uh, to give, give people that, that opportunity to support. And so, those are, again, we, we did not change the intent, but rather clarifying, just making sure that people understood what, what it was meant for and how people could access it. And some of the crossouts, you know, there's just no ref, no longer references, you know, support staff is no longer even united, so in terms like representatives from each group as opposed to a specific title. So that way, you know, go back every year and have to revise certain aspects.
Is there more changes we want to make to this besides what we've done?
We're not, I'm not recommending any of this.
What's that? Wait till the next meeting? Everybody good with that? All right. Mark, you'll make sure that gets sent, you know, put it on the next.
Yep, I'll put it on the next meeting.
Okay.
That's another reason why we, you know, this is such a big, big, uh, document or important part of the handbook, that's why we put it out separate.
Okay. All right, discuss possible recommendation on employee manual updates. Did we have any?
A little editorial nature, some updates based on, um, you know, for example, the years of service for teachers. That's in section seven point zero one, but, uh, again, we've been working on these since last spring.
Okay.
And we'll have some laws we recommend, we'll talk about that at the next policy meeting, and that will be, uh, those are pretty much all editorial.
Do you want, um?
Are we stacking, just stacking the list, just in case?
Okay. All right, so those two items, three and four, will be on the next agenda for voting. Uh, moving on, C finance, discuss possible action on Wi-Fi units for buses. It's a pilot program, Mark, do you want to?
Sure, and Scott's here, Scott and Dan and I have, uh, been investigating this a little bit. Uh, we did reach out to First Student, I had been at a conference and been doing some reading. Rural districts in Wisconsin, like northern Wisconsin, Siren and Fall Creek's pretty similar in our size. Siren had a grant last year, Fall Creek, yeah, my understanding is started to do it, they just have a little bit longer routes than normal. So, looked into, uh, the potential of doing one of these in a pilot, and so, where would, where are, we have some longer routes, as well as we also have students, student athletes that are traveling to the east side of Dane, and so, would there be an opportunity for them to, you know, get started on the homework earlier on the way there back as appropriate? So, looked into it, it's, uh, you know, we had a lot of technical questions, um, we did get a follow-up, what if we go over, so, right now, the conversation is to have three buses, at least one athletic and then two longest, two of our longest routes, we'd identify them, and that would be thirty gig per month. If we go over, it's fifteen dollars a gig. And we have the flexibility of turning this off, there's upfront equipment fee, and then there's the monthly cost, and so, I think you can see that in the quote. Their yearly cost is about thirty-four hundred a year, the equipment cost for three devices is a little over sixty-nine hundred dollars.
What's the capacity for each one? Like, do you know the capacity, how do you come around to it?
Do you remember that?
I don't recall, I'm gonna be saying.
We would filter for video, you know, the video would just stop it.
You can, you can filter for, for certain po, certain kinds of content, so if you watch video websites, you can also throttle how much one of your connection pull at, at a time, so that's not a slowdown of that connection.
And it's ten gigs?
Per bus.
Per bus, is that shared or is it just?
It's a, it's a pool that.
It's a pool?
Yeah.
Okay.
They'll all pull from that pool.
Okay.
So, we were doing some calculations last week, and you, I had asked Scott to do some calculations, and so, right now, they're estimating between five to ten gigs per month per bus, is what they've seen in the users that they've been working with. Everybody would have to, it'd be, you know, you had it kind of down to the minutes.
Yeah.
Every, everybody was using it.
Yeah, we, we were like, go, going by kind of the, the longest routes, and then trying to figure out, you know, one time, a four-week span, how much bandwidth they would be able to pull at a sustained rate that was bus ride, was about a, maybe per second sustained, or, I think, all three buses, which is probably more than would be just for regular road trips, I would mean just for minimum stuff like that.
Is there a way to turn it off after you reach the thirty, so that there's no? There's, you get notified.
Okay.
So you can, you know, like, you, you can be sent, as of today, you can be sent alerts when a single unit has hit its cap, and in this case, we would have a feature developed that would notify you, for example, of, you know, approaches. I think we could say, hey, we're at eight, just like when my phone tells me, you're reached. So, we looked at it as an opportunity, um, to give some students something to do on the bus, and, you know, hopefully, they would start to use it for a pot, obviously, we help shape these positive behaviors, um, but also, you know, technology is quite honestly, you know, something that almost everybody's using, so. This would be for a full year, twelve months.
All right, any other discussion on this?
Seems like, uh, just me personally, it seems like a frivolous luxury. Like, what would the kids do when they're on the internet? They would look out the window. And I get, I get the point of, like, please try, do you get the point of, uh, kids wanting to do homework and stuff, but if you've been on one of those buses doing this with your homework, it's awful hard, even with your phone or anything else, or, I'll be right, and if they can get reception out by you where you live, we're about to them, because that's, that's awesome, because if they can get it on guard, fucking places like that, awesome, great, but it just seems more like a, a want rather than a, if you're a nice person, you know, something that everybody else.
And then I guess, I'm seeing the value in it too, like, what type of homework are they gonna do if you want to follow?
Oh, and Google Docs, you could, any Google Doc you can open up and work on and close it, and it'll be lower than you get to a Wi-Fi spot, so it's not like you can't access Google Docs through a notebook or anything, so. For the longer trips, like, say, for something like, if we were to do like eight-minute football, those are longer trips, totally get the benefits, but again, you can still do the exact same things with any, with any notebook or anything else you're taking, because that would be the capacity using it for, I imagine. Because if you're just, if you're just doing stuff with your phone, I don't see the value in that. And this.
I'm just wondering, as a pilot program, if it's worth giving it a shot, just to see what happens? Just, let's get some feedback and see how, see how it's used, to see if it is. I'm afraid it's the future, it's a.
One of the things, I, yeah, one of the things that I think is concerning is that, you know, we're spending five thousand dollars to put Wi-Fi on a bus, when we don't even have Wi-Fi in the school yet.
And I, I would say that's not accurate, we have Wi-Fi available to our classrooms.
Only through the, uh, the lab.
Again, it goes back to how often are people using, using Wi-Fi? Do we want to get better? Absolutely, but, you know, and that's, how should I put it? That's part of later too, so, you know, what, what we want to do, I'll want to do it.
Okay, any other discussion on this? All right, I will call for a motion, is there a motion for this?
I would make a motion that we, um, try it as a pilot program, just to see, if it helps anything, to, to assist that.
Actually, that brings up a good question, are we locked in a contract, do we have to sign one?
We can verify it, but no, it's, it's one-year contract. Are, are we getting to have a grant to cover this, or are we not?
No. Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, well, with no second, no motion, uh, man, that failed. All right, moving on, donation, do we have a motion to accept?
I do appreciate the research, though, and stuff like that, I do appreciate it.
And I, uh, can I add one more thing too? I would actually really, for those schools that you've been speaking with that have, have this in place, you know, what is it that the kids are utilizing? Are they, you know, how much time are they actually spending on Google Docs working at home? I mean, you can look up those, that tracking and see what really, you know, there's people out there that have already done it, so let's use their data and knowledge, you know, that, that would be interesting to me.
All right, moving on. Do we have a motion to accept the donation of an American flag from the Sons of the American Legion in Black Earth? Over. Thank you. Thank you. Discussion?
Thank you very much.
Yes. Uh, size of this, is it one for out front, is it?
It's, it's flying right now, cool.
Okay.
So, I think it's a three by five or four by six.
Okay.
We'll use in the winter, the big flag that we have up is being a bear, it's a lot of, um, in spring.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. All right, PBIS presentation.
Well, thank you, uh, for letting me talk a little bit about PBIS tonight. Um, I'll start with, uh, well, first of all, let me, uh, say thanks to Kate Backus, uh, part of our PBIS committee, has been with us really, and we've been talking about PBIS at the elementary level almost three years, so, uh, this just didn't happen overnight, we've adjusted a lot of things along the way. As you know, last year, uh, more intensive study, how are we gonna implement this? And this year is our first year, we're fully implementing the program. I'll start by saying it's going very well, um, we're learning, we're improving, um, we think we have something that, uh, we can work with, and, uh, we look forward to just, um, moving forward with it. I, uh, forgive me, I'm gonna jump around here a little bit, um, and Kate may jump in as well with, uh, any comments that she has, um, and, um, but let me talk about our visuals first of all. Signs, we, we, uh, got signage over the summer, uh, for all the areas of our school. And, um, this banner here, and I pulled these right off the wall today, um, this, this banner typically, um, is in our cafeterias, at Mazel Manes, we act, all the kids actually signed it as well, um, as part of the agreement, we had it signed at Black Earth, but our main focus is being respectful, responsible, and safe, and everything that we do funnels around those three things. Uh, down below me here, uh, some of our, um, posters, uh, we have posters rooted for five areas. We have, uh, classrooms, so all of our classrooms have this one in it, um, obviously a big focus. Hallway, uh, we brought these, just these two examples, but we also have cafeteria, um, posters, we have, um, bathroom, and playground, so those five areas. We also made signs, uh, they're on all the buses as well, in back of the bus, you'll see the sign, which simply says, the Vanguard Way, uh, be respectful, responsible, and safe on all the buses. So, those posters really helped us channel our lessons that we taught the very first day of school. We taught lessons to the kids in all areas, basically teaching them expectations. So, we, um, we did kind of circuit, uh, from the classroom to the cafeteria to the hallways. Kids practiced, we modeled, uh, we addressed the expectations, kids had, uh, opportunity to ask questions, um, and we just kind of, um, set that right on the day one. Can't remember if it's the first week or the second week, um, then we followed up and we actually taught expectations on the bus as well, uh, each group level came up to the bus, uh, we talked about bus expectations, uh, and that's something we've done every year, um, just incorporated it with, uh, PBIS this year, so, uh, and those lessons I actually taught, um, when the kids came out, um, and then, um, at the end of that lesson on the bus, uh, we actually do a safety drill, and, um, we talk about, um, how to access the bus, so, um, those are things that, um, um, those are what those posters are. Um, with PBIS, um, little example here, uh, the voice levels. Big part of PBIS is common language, so in either elementary school, you can tell any of our kids, we need a zero voice. Everybody knows what that means. Voice level one, everybody knows what that means, and we practice that. And it's interesting how our voice level, uh, posters have changed, um, we've been using that for two or three years, probably, but we used to have, um, uh, level zero, uh, just no talking, okay? Well, we discovered that you can make a lot of noise with your feet, your hands, your pencils, your, and, and that's what was listed on there, so, so we, uh, zero means no noise, no noise, and, uh, that was a really, uh, a, a very simple adjustment that we made. So, uh, our voice levels, that's common language that we can use, uh, another piece of common language is, uh, give me five. You know, ele, any of our elementary schools, you can hold up, we had an assembly on Tuesday at each school, um, all the kids were in the gym, I held up my hand and said, give me five, and, um, I had all their attention. And the give me five means, uh, there's meanings to each finger, so, one finger, face me, eyes on me, see if I can get them right, eyes on me, um, ears on me, I got my cheat sheet here, so I, I tell you the right thing, where did I put it? What did I say, so face me, eyes, ears, hands, so, uh, uh, quiet bodies, and Kate, what's the third?
Hands still.
Hands still? Sorry, but I, I even brought my, um, oh, and just quiet, so we have quiet, so those five things, so give me five, and, uh, all of our teachers are using that, so you can go in any classroom, and if it's, uh, bustling, the teacher needs to, uh, get their attention, she can just simply raise her hand and say, give me five. And actually, all the kids, most of the kids, when they hear that, they'll raise their hand as well. So, when I'm in the gym with all the kids, and there's a hundred fifty kids, I raise my hand and do this, about half the kids' hands go up, and that's just an indicator, um, easy common language. Along with that, um, just we can say body basics as well. So, voice levels, uh, the give me five, and just saying body basics, the body basic simply means essentially the same thing as give me five, um, but that gets everybody in place, um, where they give each other personal space. Use that a lot when we're lining up, uh, because lines, um, and Kate will chuckle, uh, lines drive you crazy, uh, that'll make you love it. You need the kids lined up and waiting in line, oh, it's, um, uh, one of those things. But our common language has really helped. Um, then we have some other things that we do, but really, the focus is teaching and modeling expectations. That was our goal with PBIS, so we have very specific expectations, not only for the kids, but for us as staff as well. Uh, I can give you one example, so we've taught certain behaviors, uh, in all these areas, early in the school year, at Black Earth, and things kept coming up on the playground, uh, we had some group of kids that were playing tag, and they were running around the equipment, uh, we had, uh, a couple of small injuries out there, so, um, it was brought to my attention, and it kept happening, so we, we talked to the kids, um, actually, some of the students had missed some recess time, well, I had about six kids, so what I did is I re-talked, um, the playground expectations. Took these six kids, we went out to the playground, we got by the playground equipment, and I had observed, I'd gone out and I watched them, uh, one of the recesses before, just, what's happening here? Because it kept coming up every day, these kids are, you know, what's going on? Well, um, the classic model, uh, you give consequences, you put them on the wall, and you take recess away from them. Um, what I did is I took them all out there, and I said, look, you can have issues, you can't play tag around the equipment, there's too many kids, uh, you run around and end up, you know, it's not safe, it's not safe, okay? You're responsible to know the expectations, so when you buy the equipment, um, here's. So, when you buy the equipment, here's what we expect." And we went through and we practiced some things, we modeled some things. Then I took it the next step, because I noticed they didn't have enough to do. They needed something to do other than, they love to run and they love to play that game. So, I needed to give an alternative. So, I tapped into my vast knowledge of playground. And actually, I taught them a game that Bob Walker's claim to fame, he invented it, he says. It's just a simple game at Black Earth. It's what we call kick, catch. And the outdoor, or the baseball field fence, kids can stand on each side. It's the outfield home run fence, is what it is. And they can stand on each side, and truly, they just kick the ball, and then they try to catch it. Kick the ball, try to catch it. And truly, stop, distance. I had no more tag issues on the playground. So, that group of kids, that is the, that is the reteaching. You have to show them, show them expectations, give them an alternative. That's what, you know, positive behavior support is all about. We want to see those right expectations. So, that's the best example that I have on my end. But my teachers are doing that every day. They're reteaching, they're showing expectations, they're trying to model that. That's where I said, we're still learning, we're getting better. And that's going to be, I'll talk a little bit, that's going to be a little bit of a focus area for us moving forward. So, highlights of the program, going quick here. We've had two all-school assemblies. We did kickoff, first day of school, talked about expectations, celebrated a little bit. And then, just last week, we had an end of trimester celebration as well. Where we celebrated our successes. We did a Gacha drawing. This is actually, I just grabbed the box. These are our Gacha tickets. But we did a drawing, and we do a weekly Gacha ticket drawing. Kids receive these when, you know, we see them following expectations. They walk in the hallway, considering certain respectful behavior that we talked about in the past. We give a lot of these out. Actually, between the two schools, we've given out over 700, or 7,300 of these so far this school year. So, if you ever need a job at night, somebody has to cut once a year in the morning. So, you've done a lot of cutting. You see yellow ones in here? These are from our bus drivers. They have bus Gacha tickets. And maybe we give them out as well. And that's helped them out there. But basically, we took this and we did a drawing. I gave out six bigger prizes on last Tuesday to each building. And we do a weekly Gacha drawing. Every Friday, teachers bring down their Gacha tickets, we put them in a bucket. And we draw three names every Friday morning. Announce the names, and they come down, and they get a little reward every Friday morning. And we keep track of that. How many, obviously, I knew we'd given out only 7,000 Gacha tickets, but we keep track. And at the end of the month, the homeroom with the most Gacha tickets earns a reward. So far, each of the classrooms have, they've picked an extra recess supervised by me each month. So, I've done that. It's great, well, and of course, they're good as gold to be out there, it's a lot fun. But we give them a couple of choices, so they can pick what their rewards are at the end of each month for the homerooms. Now, with this, and I'm going to plug this a little bit, but the PBIS meeting, we meet every month, so Kate's part of that. We talk about what's going well, where areas that we need to improve. And we also review our data. And this is going to be a little awkward, but I'm just going to show you this, because it has, I was going to get a projector and put this up. But I'm going to plug EdgeClimber here just a little bit. We look at EdgeClimber, and we're recording all of our majors and our minor behavior reports in EdgeClimber. And what a major is, is that's a, it's an office referral. Where a teacher, and I'll just use the language, writes up a student, or something that happened. And then, that comes to the office, and that's a little bit bigger deal. And the expectations that's dealt with at the office level. Minors are reports that the teacher's putting in EdgeClimber. And those are behavioral issues that are dealt with at the classroom level. So, that's the difference. But we look at that every month. So, I'm just going to, I'm just going to kind of walk here. And it puts it in chart form, so I'm just going to just show you a quick visual. Lots of different things in here, so, and I can group it, it's great for me, because I can group it together with whole schools. I can separate it out from the schools. But EdgeClimber will tell me, you know, the number of referrals, what level are the majors, minors, type of incident that we're reporting, incident location. So, I have a good feel for that time of day, we record the time in there. How would we respond? Teachers also record if they do minors, so how do they respond to that? There's lots of information, EdgeClimber's really helped us with that. Probably one of the key tools for us to make this happen. Okay, really, it's important. How does it get in EdgeClimber? I enter all the majors, so when they come to me, I put those in. Teachers enter all the minors. So, the information, so if the teacher feels out of minor, they enter into EdgeClimber. And then, we're trying to review at the end of each month with the PBIS committee. Looking really, really well. So, talking about that, I thought it'd be interesting just, you know, for this presentation. So, how many behavior reports have we had so far this year? We've actually had 98 total behavior reports. Forty-four percent of those have been majors. Fifty-six percent of those have been minors. Now, the key data that we're looking for here, looking for is, so where are they happening? Happening. Forty-two percent of our behavior reports are happening right in the classroom. In the classroom. Nineteen percent on the playground, and 14% on the bus. So, those were our top three. And that's where they were happening. So, as a staff, we can take that information, say, "Okay, so, let's focus on different areas." Then we looked at, so we know what's happening in the classroom, so what type of behaviors are we seeing? Here at the first start of the school year. Thirty-nine percent of all our referrals are related to defiance or disrespectful type behaviors. So, basically, they're not following directions, not doing as you're asked, refusing, could be, you know, not doing their work, or could be a variety of things. But almost 40, you know, 40% of our reports were that. So, what did we do? Well, at our assembly on Tuesday, I announced our goal for December. What do you think our goal was for PBIS? We want to get better with following directions. So, tie it right into what we do every day in the classroom, is we put up learning targets. Every lesson, we have learning targets. Here's what we're going to learn in math, here's what we're going to do in reading class for PBIS. You know, that we upholster, and hopefully, we'll have it up tomorrow at Maisel for December 1st. So, I'm going to get the one made for Black Earth. But we're going to have I can statement for the month of December. So, it's right out there. Our goal is, I can follow directions appropriately. So, that's going to be our goal and our focus area. How will we do that? Well, we'll talk about it in our classrooms. And we'll reward kids with Gacha tickets when we have, when they are following those directions. I was very upfront with the kids when we had our assembly. I said, "We're just having too many situations where kids aren't following the directions. They're not following, you know, what the teacher asks. And our teachers don't ask for them to do anything unreasonable. But there's no reason why they can't follow simple directions. And we want to get better there." So, we're going to make that a focus area. And hopefully, we can celebrate in December, we plan to, just prior to the Christmas break, we'll have a celebration. Hopefully, success that we had there. So, we're hoping that we'll see less of those defiant behaviors right in the classroom based off of that. So, that, that's where the data in EdgeClimber can really help us. What else can the data tell us? Well, 98 behavior referrals. My first thought, well, that's a lot. That's a lot. So, looking a little closer. Obviously, we can pinpoint, you know, where some of those are coming from. But almost 60% of those, 98, there's 10 kids that are part of that. So, how many, you know, where we see it. So, our behavior at elementary schools actually pretty good. But, you know, data can be a little bit deceiving based on, and of those 10 kids, most have individualized behavior plans that we're working with them in other ways. Gacha tickets, I talked a little bit about those. Obviously, part of our reward system. And it's interesting, you know, you can keep track month to month. So, even has the data, we look, look in here, and luckily, we collected them today, out of November. And for whatever reason, we gave out 300 bus Gacha tickets in November than we did in October. You know, essentially, almost at all schools. Very comparable. Could be because we had less days in November, not sure. Not sure. But something to think about. And for us to talk about the PBIS committee, why did we seem to get, and who knows? We also have, we give out Golden Tickets as well. That's a little bit, that's a step up from our Gacha tickets. Also, we realize we've only given out 15 Golden Tickets so far this school year. So, one of our focus areas, you know, we have, a lot of our kids have done some great things. So, I hope that that number will increase, you know, moving forward. I think our focus has been so much on this, the Gacha tickets, you know, the Golden Tickets is, you know, I think real simple. We just, we don't always remember we have those, so we give those out as well. Well, to finish up here, another big part of our goal was just having some common classroom management system. Where we're consistent from classroom to classroom, so how we're managing our behavior. We implemented a website or a software program called Classroom Dojo across the board. Every homeroom is doing that. Our teacher unit using it, where our kids can earn points throughout the day. Classroom keyboards are built into that system. It is a direct communication to parents. Parents can log in, and they can see how many points their kids have earned. You know, that day, teacher's kids in the home room. There's a piece of that tool where they, they do a little book. That's all part of it. So, we have had a pretty good response from parents with Classroom Dojo. It's not perfect, we know that. That's what we picked this year. You know, at this point, we plan on using that moving forward. But we may take a look at that, see if there's something different that we use for next year. Just not sure about that.
I really liked it in last Dojo as well.
Yes, parents really liked it.
Yeah, I really liked last Dojo, especially from this collection, he gives us the homework answers.
Yeah, it's a great communication tool as well.
So, all the math work comes home. You can check out last Dojo, and there's the answer sheet.
I don't know why, but kids love it.
They do.
They do.
They create their avatars or anything.
It's not perfect, but it seems to be working really well in the reward system. It puts it in, you know, hey, it's our family, turn those points, so this back us, will give us whatever we can earn if we get a gazillion, you know, Dojo points or whatever she has, has planned. And I think my teachers really like it.
Yep, it's simple, it's easy, the kids bought into it, no problem. And here, it flips up on your phone, doesn't it?
Yep.
So, it's automatic.
But the teachers can put it on the smartboard too, right?
Oh, yes.
And the kids can all see what's going on there too.
Yes.
I was in the teacher's classroom during the prep. We were meeting on some things, and all of a sudden, a computer, I hear some things. Her kids were in our class. And Miss Fisher was actually giving them Dojo points during our class. And so, the homeroom teacher heard that. And, yeah, that was pretty cool, and it just happened to be in the right spot at the right time. And so, you know, our specialist teachers can use that as well.
And the photos and stuff, it takes conversations with teachers that you don't normally have. Where you can see all these things are seen, and you can have some dialogue, other than just what's going on.
Yeah, I think it's really helped our parent communication of that one. So, the goals for us, just, you know, these could be the overall goals. You know, we haven't specifically talked about these. I guess we have this first one moving forward. We want to get a better system for our reports, our referrals, whether they're majors or minors, and just to work end to end. We want some, I'll say, better technology. We have some forms that we thought were going to work, that we created about spring, the summer, but not working all that well. What I mean by that is where teachers have it on the computer, they can fill it in, they ship it off to me. But it's not working as well as we would like. And so, we want to, we want to get better there. And I think it's just a matter of us cleaning our heads together, reinform that work. We're close. We want to improve that. And last PBIS meeting, we talked a little bit about, you know, and I'll talk about this at our next staff meetings too. Just how much are we reteaching certain expectations? Well, sometimes you have to pause, you're seeing certain behaviors in your classroom, and you want to get better. It's okay to talk about that. Kids are part of that whole process. We practice, we teach, clarify expectations, give them alternatives. I'm not sure how well we're doing with that, so we're going to look at that as well. So. That's PBIS, that is, you know, quick data, so to speak. We'll look into that. Any questions that you have for Kate or yourself? Be happy to answer them.
No, I just think it's working in the morning time. Sometimes kids will get off the bus, and they'll come, they just want to tell me they got a ticket.
From the bus driver.
Yeah, from the bus driver, and that just, that starts off their day and the high note.
Yep.
Do we need another caller to give to the police officer so they can hand them over when they're crossing the street correctly and such?
Well, he has access to our pink ones, so anytime, you know.
I have my stuff cards.
And, you know.
Be careful with, you know, the kids when you guys are already doing that. Be careful with the kids with the plans. Because PBIS can become an exclusionary factor really quick for some students.
Yep.
Because they just can't use those every day.
Right.
So, that sounds like you already have that.
Yeah, and that's where you just, yeah, I would do this a little bit different. You got, you know, certain plans work differently for children. And that's where, we just have to be aware of that. At any behavior system, if there is no easy trick fix, this is what you do, this is how it works. It's a living, creative game. And I have a good case, it's a little different. So, I think we're on the right page, and it seems to be working well for us. The kids, I think they're bought in, staff are bought in. We're, we keep learning and we keep doing.
Do you have any data from like years prior on the directions of like major-minors? Like, do you have like comparable?
I do.
How are we doing, you know, year to date?
It's probably up right now. We probably have, because I think we reported it better than we have in years past. Essentially, we didn't have minors, majors, and minors. We just really had the majors. So, all the stuff that teachers were doing, you know, in the classroom would be a basis, but that didn't get recorded. So, I only have data on when I received a write-off, you know, because a student did this, and I think it was a pretty big deal. So. So, the data really isn't comparable. I can compare majors to majors. And our majors, I think, are probably down this year. But it didn't work for this, it shows in the data. But I do have those majors.
That'll just be interesting to see, because I think this is so great, and the kids really do love it. So, it's going to be neat to see years to come and how it's really changing the culture.
We hope so. Anything else for us? Give Kate a Gacha, I'm coming to my.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Rich, fall sports summary. I made a copy for each of you. I will read you all of these. What I did was I worked with the coaches, just talked to them, let them know I was coming to give a short summary on the fall co-curriculars, because as we get into this a little bit, you'll see there's more than just sports that we have here that I've reported on. A middle school cross-country, this year was one of our bigger teams. Yeah, I played here two years, and this is one of our bigger teams per Kurt Wong. That, 20 students, and he kind of broke it down for you there. And then, just kind of summarizing what his ideal coaching philosophy is. He's looking to improve their skills, seek personal improvement. He wants them to have fun and keep that interest in cross-country to grow the high school program. And then, he does make notes towards the end of his notes there, that some of my runners, we're near the top of the races, somewhere near the bottom. We do time, so we race, do our initial race here. We host the first one each year of Wisconsin. We host the first one each year at Wisconsin Heights. Three, four, five schools, just depends on who's looking for a meet to come to. We just give them times, we don't give them medals, no places, nothing like that. But you go to some of the bigger ones, you're gonna find in the middle school that they do give them ribbons and places and all of these things. So it, it's kind of a mix, it's hard to tell, really, other than just talking about times, who really went way up. So he says, you know, I just, I want them to have fun, I want them to get better, learn about cross country. And this year, what the conference did was the girls' cross country for eighth grade was always a little bit shorter than the guys'. And so what they did was they made it equal to then prepare those girls for high school. So this was the first year our eighth grade girls actually had to run a longer distance as well. So that was an adjustment that we seemed to do well. And not all the schools did it, because some of the schools, you have a pretty set course. So it's hard to just go out and change your course for an extra half mile, you have to figure out how to do that. For us, it was easy, we, we made it work, because we always run it for the boys. So the girls' eighth grade ran the two mile course. There were other schools that you just could do it, you ran a mile and a half, and it's just what it was. So again, you had to kind of take that perspective, that the time may have been really fast, which also ran only a mile and a half instead of two miles, which you ran here the week before. So Kurt worked with them, and he did a great job. Middle school volleyball, what a unique situation this year, didn't have enough for a seventh grade team. So we came to that, basically the cross in the road, said, what do we do? Either we leave them out to the seventh graders, or include them and then have one team? Or do we put seventh and eighth graders in the seventh grade team? And do we offend people by saying, hey, your daughter's gonna play on the seventh grade team, how do you pick, how do you choose? So what we did was, I sat down with the coaches, and we simply just said, what's best for our kids was to put all kids on the eighth grade team and make them two full teams. That way, nobody could say their team was bad, good, whatever, it's just we were equal. We made scrimmage each other each night, they were equal. The thing we ran into was, we didn't have enough eighth grade uniforms by doing that. And then we tried to get the seventh grade uniforms. Unfortunately, the dynamics of our girls had changed over time, so those uniforms didn't fit. So we were lucky enough to, Amy Schlumgut let us use some of their old high school ones. The girls were pretty pumped, because the ones they had to use were the ones they won the state championship in. So they were pretty excited about that. But everywhere we met, they were very competitive. We let all the schools know ahead of time, hey, this is what we're doing, they're split even. Because in the middle school, you're supposed to have the A group, and then the B group, and the B plays second or first. And they're supposed to be, in lack of a better word, just the lesser. So it's like, you definitely have an A group, but we told them upfront, we're not doing that, we're making them equal. Because everybody is, it's just the way that it works, and it's better for us just to keep them equal. Our girls were very competitive this year, they did a great job. The coaches actually did a great job this year balancing that and coaching those girls. One of the things they noticed, what they brought to my attention, was they needed some new equipment. I did get sixty volleyballs this year through my budget, and then they asked that they could do a bake sale. They wanted to raise some money to get some more equipment. So they actually did two bake sales at high school volleyball games, and it was strictly a donation for the baked goods. Whatever you wanted donated, they didn't put any price on anything. They raised a little over three hundred dollars just by donation. So we were able to work with our supplier, and he gave us a deal on some volleyballs and some ball carts. So they actually purchased sixteen new volleyballs and two new ball carts for next year. So in all, they had twenty-two new volleyballs, going in for next year, and some ball carts. And, you know, we're just, now we just look at uniforms and what can we do for them next year and make that a simple process. They were excited, and I think they did an outstanding job. What we had to do and how we balanced that, it was, it was fun to watch. FFA on the next page at the top. They have eighty-three members, and Kim broke it down for you, Ms. Howser, twenty-three in the middle school, sixty in the high school. She lucky, she just reported that fifteen students went to the national convention. And then seventy-five percent of her members, or their members, will attend some type of leadership workshop conference in the fifteen, sixteen school year. So again, that's a pretty remarkable statistic for the number of students we have in the building. The eighty-three of them are involved with FFA, is really nice to see. The high school fall play is coming on very shortly, next weekend. They have a total of fifty students involved, which Mrs. Howser said, this is the largest group they've had in nine years she's been here. And she breaks it down for you there, the cast, the crew, and the pit. They have three former members who come back to play, and twelve community members who are also playing in the pit for the fall play. And then she gives you the dates there, December eleventh and twelfth at seven PM, and the thirteenth at two PM. Tickets are seven dollars for adults, five dollars for students. And then she puts a little blurb in there, it'd be nice to see the school board at a show. So I just wanted to make sure I read that to you.
They have a, they have a dozen there already.
What's that?
They already have a dozen, we can.
Yeah, he's in the, he's in, it's in there.
Minus Jim.
Minus Jim. And then she also, next Thursday, the tenth, is the middle school band and choir concert at seven PM here in the North Gym. And then on the fifteenth, is the high school band and choir concert. So those events are coming up. High school cross country, boys and girls, had a total of fifteen participants this year. Sarah was our first-year coach, she actually helped Ryan Bell last year as an assistant track coach. So the transition for the students was actually very easy to endure. We had guys and girls both, both finished in third place in conference. The girls received sixth place at sectionals, and guys were in seventh place. The girls can dig it a first at Reesburg. Lucas Caminetti, there was some discussion about how the performer of the year, or the cross country performer of the year in the conference should be decided. After lengthy discussion and a revote, Lucas ended up as one of the co, there was three of them, co-performers of the year. So we have a, a student athlete who was a co-performer of the year. He was also nominated for an all-state academic award because of his grade point average, too. We haven't received any information that I had to submit that nomination. He did go to state for cross country, and then she does list the young lady, Coral Leiva, who did get second team all-conference. High school football, one of our larger teams in the past, from what I've gathered and looked at the numbers that we had as far as participants. This year, we had thirty-two overall. The record was oh-nine and oh-five, but I think that the most important thing, what I, what I tried to reiterate to the seniors, was simply this. It's not your legacy of the, the record that you leave behind, it's that you never quit, that you continue to do well every night in practice, and every play, and every down, and everything that you did in each game was a legacy that those seniors left. And I think they did a great job with what they had and with the inexperience. And one of the things, just that, real briefly in football, you know, when you look at experience and how much it matters. The teams that we play have a lot of experienced two- and three-year varsity starters. Whereas, as, and then Tom and I have had this talk in the past, as maybe some of us have, other board members, myself. You know, we had three of our five offensive linemen, maybe four at any time, that had never played a varsity down. And those are your starting offensive linemen, try to make blocks and try to do things. So I think that the record doesn't indicate how much growth was actually there this year. They did receive three second-team all-conference nominations, or football players were second-team all-conference. And then four players received honorable mention. We did play a tenth game this year, we did play a eight-man game. That school that we played against wasn't a serious decision-making process to go to eight-man. They since been notified by the WIA that they're gonna allow that school to switch conferences, so they're no longer gonna go to eight-man. The WIA put them in a different, more competitive, to their advantage conference. So now they're going in a different direction for eight-man next year. But we are still going to eight-man, so that was the purpose of that game, was to get some more experience for our kids. We have what we call a Froshmore team, we couldn't quite support the freshman team. And so we let the conference schools know ahead of time, we will play some sophomores down. They're not gonna be all-starters, but if we did have a sophomore starter, we would try to mix him in with the freshmen. They went one and two this year, they did a good job. They were, they were getting reps throughout the game. There was some inexperience that showed during those Froshmore games. However, there were times where they came together, and they played Marshall, which is a true JV team. You know, and they'd eat teams like that, or, I'm sorry, not Marshall, it was the week before that they played basketball, played a true JV team. And they win those games, and they won very handedly. But then there was the nice, where they didn't do so well that the true freshman experience showed up. But the fact is, we got them some games against their own level, and that was important. Out of the eight games we had scheduled, we only finished with three. Two of them we had to cancel, because we just ran out of freshman-type players that we were playing so many kids on the varsity, we just couldn't get a chance. But the other games, the other three, were canceled by other schools. So we weren't in the, we were not alone on an island this year with the not being home play freshman games. There were some bigger schools than us that just said, we can't do it, we're, we're out of players, we're gonna have to cancel our freshman season. So, and then we included the youth, we thought it was, I thought it was important to include that, just to kind of show you the numbers that are coming, or potentially coming. They had a total of twenty-three kids this year, and they had six, thirteen, and four. Again, I know this isn't a school team, but I thought it was just important, because we, we've had discussions at length about eight-man, eleven-man, and all those things. But just to kind of reiterate, here's the numbers, and here's what's possibly coming through the pipeline for us in the future. High school boys soccer, they had thirty-two players this year from Heights, they had six from Barnabell. You can see their overall record, they're sixteen, five, and four, which is their best overall record in school history. Their conference record doesn't reveal a whole lot, you look at his four, three, and two, so you kind of look at that. But they were outstanding to watch. They first ever, they hosted two rounds of regionals, so they, they won the regional champ, I'm sorry, they, they got a buy, they got a buy then.
Plus two, so.
Yeah, so they, they actually won the regional championship here on our practice field up there. They went to sectionals and got to the sectional finals game. They had one first-team all-conference, they had three second-team all-conference players, and then one honorable mention. And I think from what I've understood from Bartlett, going into next year, they lose two starters from that team that were senior defensive players. So they should be back, reloaded, and ready to go, which, if you get a chance to come live to play, boy, they, they hustle, they're, they're a great group to watch, and they're fun, a fun group of guys. And then high school volleyball, they had only a JV and a varsity. I know in the past, they've had a freshman team, but our number's seven low, so we had twenty-seven this year. The JV didn't win a match, they won some games, or a few sets, as Coach put it, but not the whole match. The varsity was twenty-eight, nine overall. They were conference co-champs, regional champs, and then the sectional runner-up. They did finish first, and won invite second at two, and then won fifth and won sixth. Their all-conference or individual awards are there for you to look over. I think it's important to note, too, the outstanding job they did, because there were Division Two and Division Three champions that they had to play this year. One in an invite, and the other one, Waterloo, is in our conference. You know, to go to Waterloo and beat the defending state champion is pretty remarkable on their home court. They came here, beat us in five sets, and then, you know, you go to sectionals and we lose in four. But our girls fought hard, and it was fun to watch. And Waterloo did win the state championship again this year. So again, two sectional final losses the past two years to the state champion, that's pretty remarkable. And I think last, this year, for the next year, we lose, I think there's two. So in that group that's coming back, we're gonna be missing two starters, but she's got quite the group there that's gonna reload and be ready to go. That is it for co-curriculars with FFA, the school play, middle school, high school. You guys have any questions for me?
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, future IT planning presentation.
I'll cover some, some of the, the things we've currently done from, from this summer up to about this point now. As well as some definitely upcoming things, and some, some future things as well. One of the big things that's really helped get some more projects done is the addition of Dan Perkins. It's, it's been really helpful to have, have a tech person in the IT department actually to buy the boat of. And just, just some of the things that, always I'd be running from one end and looking to the other end to check something, if the cord's plugged or not. It helps have people there, there doing that kind of thing. One of the, actually, like, the big thing this summer we did was migrate away from Novell. Now, Novell was, we had used on our servers, that handled storing all of our files, handling our, our logins to the network, and a lot of the core network functions for, for our, for our network here. Novell wasn't nearly as popular as like Windows Server was, so a lot of things didn't always integrate as well with Novell. So we were running into problems trying to find things that would integrate like with our, our login system, so we wouldn't have more password follicles to remember. So we, we actually migrated away from that to Windows Server now. So that actually opened a lot of opportunities to just integrate new things internally here, we couldn't have done it before. And, and that, that plays into eventually allowing better guest access on our networks with Wi-Fi and wired access. Where previously it would have been a little harder to integrate a login system with, with Novell. So that was, that was the, that was like the whole summer there, it was just basically that project for the most part. It involved reinstalling every single computer in the whole district from scratch, redoing all of our servers from scratch, migrating all of our user data to, to the new, the new servers. That was, that was quite a project, and that also helped have people doing, doing that kind of project. The other thing, as part, part of the, the software updates, they were using up more memory on the computers. And that was making the systems perform very slowly. And it was, it was quite noticeable, just with a few things open at one time, that the systems were just draining. Previously, we had decided on doing like about a five-year cycle for computer refreshes, where we buy new computers every, every five years for starters. And it was about, I think, right, probably about the fourth, the sixth year mark for some computers now. And opposed to doing the new machines, because we, we found that, that they weren't really exceeding our capacity for a lot of the, the specs on these computers now. The main thing was memory was, was running out, and that really caused performance issues. So for a little over three to four hundred dollars, we actually upgraded ninety-one computers, going from mostly two gigabytes of RAM to eight gigabytes of RAM. So performance has skyrocketed on those computers now. And that was basically the cost of less than five new computers, so we had ninety-one computers for, for that, for that cost. There's some more computers that were of the older, actually quite an older age, probably from like 08 era, that we're actually working out on, on replacing. So I have some, some new machines in place to actually replace those, those systems. And we'll, we'll move some around, some of them around, give, give those new machines to teachers, and take some of those and put them to other staff, and might need a little bit more horsepower, but not as much as a teacher would for like a smart board purpose. And smart boards, we, we were upgrading and replacing some smart boards that were either failing or were damaged in some way. Part of, part of this, we were trying out some, some new flat-panel smart boards. So these don't have head or projector, they're just basically a big TV on the screen on the wall then. And they have built-in touchscreens, one of them built onto the screens. Ran some submissions with those with mounting them, so we've been working on, on that aspect. Some of the walls weren't strong enough to actually hold the boards up, so we're working on some kind of makeshift wall-type things that, that they'll, they'll mount to instead, that's reinforced better. So that's still ongoing, ongoing project, get all those new smart boards mounted. Upcoming things for sure that we're doing here, a phone system replacement. The current system we have, it's, it's basically an analog system that, that we've patched on with more of a network-based system as well. And the manufacturer that makes our current system is getting out of the phone business, which means that in a year or two, we would have no support possibly from the vendor if there's a major problem with, with our phone system. That would, that'd make it very hard to get parts for it, if any parts go bad. It'd also increase the cost then of those parts, because they'd be a lot more rare to get them. So the one we've had has been in place for quite a while, so it's a fairly old system. So now we're looking at actually replacing the system completely. That would be getting rid of all the current hardware we have in our, in our network closets, because there's actually quite a bit of hardware that supports this. It'd be going to a software platform, so there'd be no, no hardware in our actual server rooms besides phones themselves. So this, we're on our, our current servers. Then there'd be new phones in every single room, in every single office. And all the phones would be what's called VoIP, so there's voice-over IP. So they, they're just plugged into our computer network as opposed to a phone line. And the advantage of that is that they're not tied for a certain phone jack. Like, like currently, if you move a phone off the wall here to a different room, it's gonna change the extension to be whatever that, that jack is set to. Whereas with a VoIP system, if you move the phone somewhere else, it just, it just knows that that phone belongs to that extension. Additionally, there's a lot of other features that we will get with this system. Uh, for instance, the ability to have, like, voicemails available to you on the computer without having to go to your phone. So I have, so anywhere from emailing to voicemails to you, to, uh, viewing them in any desktop appliance on the computer. I mean, you can show missed calls. There'd be, uh, the option to do, uh, easy, multi-way calling on the system, commerce calls. Um, there, there'll be desktop sharing built into the system as well, so you can actually, uh, share your desktop, kind of, kind of similar to, to a web session. Um, so a lot of, a lot of cool things this system will just, will just come with then. Um, and, uh, another, another feature on there that our, our current one kind of has, but not to the scale that the subtle one has, is, is, uh, called Unified Communications. So that's basically where, uh, like, let's say you're, you're on a, on a phone at, at your desk, and you have to drive to a different building in the meantime. You can actually hit a button on there, the call will transfer to your cell phone. You can drive to another building, login at that phone there, put the call back on that phone, and keep going with no interruption on, on actual call, so. So some of, some of the cool things that our current one kind of has, but it's limited to about a, like, five concurrent things at a time, counting voicemail, so it's not really useful in our, in our current system. Um, so, so there, there's just a lot of things that that system has that, um, will be, will be possibly useful in the future. And, um, I think a lot of the things that our current one has, this, this new one does as well, because the company we're working with, um, picked that system just for that reason, it fits like the Mitel Business Phone System. Um, so they, they, they went through a lot of different systems, and they found that was the best one that matched what the one we have right now does. Um, and I mentioned computer replacements, so I have sixteen computers right now. I think I have about twelve of them for sure that I know they'll, they'll have a home right away. Um, so those will get put in place soon. They're being set up right now. Um, as well, we, we've got cameras around the, uh, the buildings here. So we're looking at doing, there, there's some known gaps in, in actual coverage for certain areas around the building there. So we're looking at adding some additional cameras around the building to cover those gaps. Um, as well, we're looking at possibly a different platform for storing the video. The kernel we have is working, but I don't know if it'll scale beyond what we have right now. And, uh, there's been some issues within where it's a little bit slow to pull the video off when trying to request it. Um, you know, there's times when it takes five, ten minutes just to search for video from yesterday. So it's a little, I'm assuming, just, just to find some video recording.
And Scott, I just passed up kind of the cleaned-up version of my, uh, initial version of it, so. The yellow dots, we're still trying to make a decision on the, a couple of the interior spots. Need to talk to the middle school, high school administration about. But otherwise, we're looking, the X ones are pointed out that way, knowing who's coming in, having a better idea of where people are coming in, as well as the circled ones, which would be for, um, just identifying areas, exteriors that Scott talked about in terms of the gaps. So we've had an, an initial quote for seventeen. This is a little bit more. Uh, this, this is initially at twenty-one, could go up to twenty-eight, but that's, that's what we're researching right now. Part of this is based on the EMC, our liability group, come in and do an assessment. And, you know, some of the dot, the dots, the circles, if you will, are some of the recommendations they would have.
Okay, and then as well, we're looking at some upgrades to the room right here, step room. Uh, we want to get it put in place, and that's the projector that's mounted to the ceiling. It's always available then, as well as then a dedicated computer for this room. It's also attached to the projector. Stanley had a little carton to, 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 uh, project stuff. And we have this nice motorized, uh, screen here, but we have a cart that had to roll in, so. We're trying, trying to, trying to match that system to what we have with the screen as well, so. So that'll, that'll be, that'll be a bit of a project as well, try to find the exact, you know, one that, one that'll be bright enough at that, at that screen size for our requirements, so we're looking on, on that as well. Um, I've got a few options in mind for computers. I've got the option to wall. We have some, some plugs on the wall then for other things we want to plug in. Um, additionally, I'm looking at, um, a little box that plugs into a projector or, or a screen that allows you to do wireless stuff from like a tablet or a laptop. So that way, we actually project wirelessly from the device. So that's, that's a few different things I'm looking at for upgrades to this room here. Um, as well then, wireless in this building right now, looking at doing a, uh, looking into doing a full building deployments, um, with a company called Maru. Um, what we have right now, I don't know if the vendor is going to keep making future products. It seems like they're not going to, because they're still using a, a previous standard for their, for their hardware, where most vendors, a year or two ago, were, were moving to the new, the new version. Um, so it seems like they're not gonna continue with wireless as a product. So we're looking at accompanying that with Maru. Um, one of the big issues we have right now with wireless is when we move from one area to another with certain devices, they will not roll into the next access point. Like mine, for instance, I, I walked in my office down to here, and it was like, there's no signal. There, there's one in the ceiling here, it's real close. So I had to turn Wi-Fi off and un-gated it, and it should pick up. Um, so one thing that Maru does, that I don't know if any other one does the same thing, is they have a thing called virtual cell. Uh, normally what happens is a, a device will see all the access points in the area, and it will decide which one it wants to join. What virtual cell does is it makes, all the access points have the same ID. So for the device endpoint, there's only one access point to join. And then the access point of the controller handles which one will actually service the request for this device. So it moves the, the roaming record, uh, role from the device, which can be all over the board of what it, how it operates, because each, each device is different. My tablet will behave differently than a laptop, for instance. So it moves that, that decision from the device to the access point in the controller. So that should eliminate that issue, where we have devices that will not pick right up. And, you know, that's frustrating, because you get into a classroom, you pull out all the devices from the cart, half the one working, half the one not working, and you have to turn Wi-Fi on and off again, you get a, to grab a network. So that's, that'll eliminate that whole commotion. Uh, as well, we're going to have Wi-Fi in this whole building, so we won't, we can rely on carts to actually get it off our access. Um, now, for, for Maisel and Blackbird, I'm not sure if there's been, if there's definitely a, a decision on what's gonna be happening with those buildings in the future, if we're gonna keep them or not. Um, so at this point, until there's a, until that's decided, we're not gonna actually do a full Wi-Fi deployment there, because that's, that's required for wiring, and we don't wanna put, expect into a building that might be going away in the future, you know, in the near future here. Um, so this building, for sure, though, is gonna stay, so we're going to, and it's, it's already wired for access points. So it's basically just having to, having to buy access points now, and Wi-Fi's in for that. They weren't able to give me a price code by the time this, this meeting was, was going on, but, uh, I think it'll be actually pretty reasonable, because, because the, uh, they, they did a, a kind of a intro survey of, of what it would look like. And they were doing about twenty access points for this whole building. And the access points, I think, are roughly, depending on vendor, they were looking at like eight hundred to a thousand dollars a piece. So that gives you kind of a ballpark idea of what it would, would end up being. And there is some discounts, because we're, because we're a school, I believe, so they do some discounts for that. Um, but that, that's, uh, that would cover the, the whole building here. And then in the future as well, um, looking at possibly new servers for our server room. That would give us a little, a little more memory to, to grow our internal services. As well, the plan would be to have three servers. Currently, we have two servers in place that have the majority of our, our systems. Um, what that means is basically we can use about half the memory of those, of those two servers, because it's set up so that one can go down in time. So that way, one sort of can handle the full load of the network. If we have three servers, and assume one can go down, maybe we can use the memory of basically two of them across the, the three systems. So that gives a little more usability for our, our new platform. And I think that's all I've got there. Any questions on any of that?
Well, thank you very much. All right, uh, committees.
Next Monday, we have policy.
Monday or two Mondays.
Is it two Mondays from now?
Two Mondays from now, we have policy.
Five or five-thirty?
Uh.
All right, any other committees that need to? Okay. Do you have a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to State Statute nineteen point eight-five, Caren one, Caren C. For the consideration of employment promotion compensation and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. When the executive session ends, the school board, meaning is adjourned. Oh, thank you. Do you have a second? James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Thank you all for coming.